Good evening, everyone. It's a layover meeting of the Township Franklin on March 21st at 7:00 PM. Please rise or reply, please.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jennifer, your open public meetings statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act in the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website, and notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel, and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll call.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Constantine? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Travel Leone?
Yes.
And Mr. Pesh?
Yes. Thank you. The, uh, we have no resolutions this evening, uh, minutes of February 21st. Is there a mo- that was submitted electronically, or is there a motion to accept the minutes? Make a motion.
Have a motion?
Second the motion.
Oh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael, to you, please.
Um, I think you next time on the agenda, the public portion, you're doing that now, or?
Uh, no, let's do the, let's skip over, let's move down to the, uh, uh, housing element first, uh, so that, uh, we get that out of the way.
Um, so the, the housing element, there is public notice for that for a public hearing tonight. Um, I have a conflict because I own property within 200 feet of some of these properties, so I would not be able to participate, just so you know. I apologize for not having somebody else here, but I didn't know about this till later last week, and, um, sort of hard to get land use attorneys out on the night. So we're gonna have to, if you want somebody to give you legal advice, we'll need to have somebody come out. If you want to proceed without it, that's up to you.
Okay. This time, I'm not comfortable, oh, I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to the board. I'm not comfortable without having, uh, because this is attached to a lawsuit, I'm not really comfortable, uh, doing a presentation without having legal representation here. So I think we would postpone it, uh, in the correct legal terms, if we wanted to wait for a conflict attorney.
Yeah, I'll have to have the township, we'll have to get somebody, because technically I shouldn't find the person if,
Yeah.
if I have the conflict, um, so I have to get the, uh, the township to find someone who's available for one of my meeting nights. I think you should notice again, frankly, uh, it's a pretty important issue, and the notice, I think the only notice that costs any money is the one in the paper, the rest are by email. So you're not talking about a significant cost. I think you're better off redoing the notice, just to dot your i's and cross your t's if you're gonna do that.
Yep.
Like I said, that's no problem to redo the notice.
Is the board in agreement that we postpone and make sure we have legal representation?
Yes.
Let's do it in a formal motion.
All right, Chair, and I'll make that motion to people.
Okay, motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Jennifer, would you notify the, uh, township, or the administrator that, uh, Mike is conflicted, and we need a, uh, conflict attorney, uh, be present, and we should renotice, uh, when that hearing is going to take place?
Okay.
Land use.
Land use, yes, okay.
Okay. And actually, the reason I wanted to move it, move the agenda around, as, uh, during a public portion, it wasn't, uh, confused, there was no confusion. All right, at this time, uh, I'll entertain a motion to open the, uh, meeting to the public.
True.
Send a motion, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in public portion, if anyone wishes to approach.
Good evening.
Good evening, Barbara. Before I, before the, if it's about the fair housing piece of it, uh, I'd rather not talk about it like we're out of...
That's okay. I just wanted to actually thank you for...
I'm sorry.
I wanted to thank you for postponing that until there is legal representation, because my questions, I'll just kind of tell you what they are, and I don't expect answers, had to do with, um, the folks who live in this overlay district. I'm assuming a lot of them might not be aware that their properties are in this district, so I had questions about what kind of ramifications that has on their land use going forward. I'm assuming there's no, and nobody should answer me, that there's no deed restriction or anything, but, you know, my legal questions have to do with how that's going to affect them, and their potential to use their land for some other purposes at another date, and whether we'd have to insert a different property if that were to happen, but...
I'm not gonna say about specific property, but the way an overlay doesn't change the zone.
Right.
You're zoned RA, you're still zoned RA, you're still afforded all those uses.
Okay.
You just have the optional use of a higher density if you so choose. So it doesn't eliminate, or it gives a land or another option, it doesn't take away any options.
I think some are LM too, so...
Yeah, it wouldn't change anything.
It doesn't change that, okay.
It's a, it's a public overlay, it's just an additional use.
I'm assuming at some point they would be notified that, you know, that they're in this, um...
We're not, uh, we're not gonna answer that.
No, you don't have to answer that.
And I'm not being difficult.
I just want you to know what, what my questions are, and...
With a lawsuit, I have to make sure that we're doing it right.
These are just my questions, so when you get a conflict attorney, and I appreciate that you did postpone it, and that you'll have it another night, so at least can be answered. My only concern is for the residents themselves that end up in this.
We will be renoticing, uh, at a future date, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Public portion already, Joe?
Kevin, hi, I'm Ryan, I'm a gentleman, it's not a technical, Kevin.
Uh, I guess what we're talking about, the ma- the, um, uh...
Uh, you know what, Kevin, let me, uh, let me jump in here for one second today. But if it's about affordable housing, uh, Michael has a co- Michael has a conflict. The board has determined to postpone that hearing.
Okay.
We will renotice, uh, once we have representation by, uh, by a conflict attorney. Uh, it's too important, and it's, uh, the whole piece involves litigation, so we'll make sure to do it right. Nobody's up here is answering questions with regards to having an attorney tonight.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say is I, I just received the plan, it's very extensive. Uh, I don't know, I guess I could ask the board this question, did everybody read through the entire plan?
Mike, uh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, okay, so...
Hold that, hold that, you know, it's a legitimate question?
I was just wondering why, I just got it yesterday, and it's, it was gonna be voted on today, but you're telling me it's not, and I'm, I'm good with that.
Hold that question too, uh, when the hearing, and we'll certainly entertain it. Uh, I don't wanna be, you know, it's not an attempt to be difficult, I just gotta do it right.
Yeah, and the, and the community, give the community a chance to review the...
There you go.
The document.
You got at least a month of reading.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Real quick question?
Sure.
I'd just like you to explain, 'cause I, I just caught this on Facebook.
Okay.
I'd like somebody to explain to me what it's all about. I mean, that's something you guys can, can answer, that's not a legal thing, right? You can, you can explain to me, to a couple of other people that might not know...
Yeah.
What it's about.
The, uh...
What's the lawsuit, what's...
Obviously, we all know about the Mount Laurel, uh, affordable housing, the Mount Laurel, and its state requirements, so the township, uh, and I'll, I'll use myself as the example. The six years I was involved with the township committee, I was involved with a federal, um, builder remedy lawsuit, and the town has gone and produced a plan to the courts that will allow a period of time, I believe it's two years, two, three years, uh, allow time of a, of a free use, where, uh, we got a grace period, uh, you know, here's a plan. If we get this and this, we'll do this and this, and it kind of puts everything on hold. So that's a, our objective is to make sure that the plan coincides with the master plan. So, uh, why is this done? Because it's protection from another federal lawsuit, from a builder rem- remedy, another builder remedy lawsuit that was extremely expensive, uh, like I said, when I, when I, I was involved with six years of it, uh, on the township committee. So this is protecting the town in the future. Uh, and basically, the planning board's job is to make sure that the plan, uh, coincides with the master plan. And that's kind of a very generic explanation.
Joe?
We have an attorney that's conflicted, and like I say, with, with, because we wanna do it right, uh, we'll make sure we get a, uh, an attorney that can address any questions.
Joe, you said, I'm sorry, federal lawsuit you just met, brought up?
Well, the builder, the shopping lawsuit, which is a builder, builder remedy lawsuit, when I was a mayor and own council, we were involved with a federal lawsuit at that time. Man, you know, but probably 10 years now, right? My, uh...
This, this affects every county and state, it's a state mandate?
This is not something...
But it has nothing to do with federal, does it?
The one he's talking about, but that's not...
We were sued federally. It, it's a state mandate, and we were sued as federal court.
Right, but this particular, uh, fair share, uh, boondoggle, this is state.
New Jersey.
Right.
New Jersey.
Look up the Mount Laurel decision.
I'm familiar with the term.
It's protecting us from a future lawsuit, a, a future builder remedy lawsuit protects the town from having to go through that again. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah. Okay, my name's Lynn Trush, I live on, uh, Frasmo Road. I have one of the, I have, uh, my, I'm in that zone, right? I was, I was notified of that. Uh, and I'm here for the same reason that this gentleman's here, just to get a Cliff Notes version of what the hell's got going on, the history of it, uh, what, what can we do about it, if anything? And it, to me, just reading through it, it all seems like it... We don't have water, I don't know how you're gonna build these, if we don't, we don't have water. Like, what, what's the chances of us having water in Franklinville? City water? I mean, if we don't get city water, none of this is gonna happen. Like, my, my wife's like, we're all moving and everything. But, you know, if I, if I see the pipe going in...
But it doesn't make it affordable housing.
Basically... But how do you build an apartment complex without?
You don't. Uh, you, you don't, uh, you know...
So are they forcing us, I don't know, I'm not sure, to, to, to build a, a water treatment facility, or sewer, and...
We have to address our requirements by having a plan in place, if there was water and so...
Right, so we have to have a plan, we don't have to necessarily take action.
So if we don't have a plan, what Joe was explaining about the builder remedy suit, if we don't have a plan, a builder can come to town...
And sue us.
And sue us.
Right.
And they'll turn us into a waste of space.
Right.
Okay, so by, by having a, complying to the plan, we're protected from that lawsuit. So following the plan, actually, protection from overdevolverment, which is kind of confusing, but that's the process.
So I was, I was right about the water, right?
Yes, without water...
If I see the pipe going in, then it's time to go. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Jason Brand, 688 Rosemont Avenue. Um, I just wanted to clarify, uh, something possibly, uh, I know Mike can't chime in on this, but, uh, hopefully, um, Chris can, um, and I don't know the exact dates, but the portion of this plan, uh, which is considered the fair share portion, uh, is the result of a settlement agreement between the township and the Fair Share Housing Center, correct?
Yes.
Um, and that agreement, um, was reached sometime in the summer of 2022?
Yeah.
Okay, after that agreement was reached, that, that settlement was made public along with the maps, the overlay maps identifying the parcels, uh, uh, to have the overlay district along with model ordinances, so on and so forth. And all of that information was made public and was open, the courts allowed the case to remain open, I could be saying that incorrectly, to allow for public comment on the matter, correct?
I don't know specifically about, uh, court making comments, or the court making it public, but, uh, yes, the settlement agreement was reached either May or June, and then I think it was, uh... And then June or July, that settlement agreement was discussed at this board, uh, and to put it simply, everything in this, the 275 pages of this housing plan is taken directly from that settlement agreement, and these exact parcels are always shown on those maps from nearly a year ago.
So there was an open public comment period with this, with the court master?
With the court, I, I don't know how that works, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, and Mike can't comment on this, he wasn't involved. Um, I don't know that it's an open public process, that it, the litigation, or not even litigation at this point, it's a settlement between Fair Share Housing Center and the township on how they will address their affordable housing obligations, which is through the Fair Housing Act and this, a state requirement. And the courts have approved of that settlement, and this is part of that settlement. I don't know the, the degree to which the settlement process is a public, uh, process.
I'll liken it to, you're familiar with the, with the DEP, those rule changes?
Yes.
They leave the matter open for public comment. You, you follow what I'm saying? Like, this year, there...
I don't think that applies here, I don't think the courts do that, um, they might, but I honestly...
Well, I'll slightly, I mean, I won't disagree completely with you, but there was a document that was made public that had the information, and I'm gonna use the term court master, that could be an incorrect term, but there was an individual that was involved in the case, whether they were working for the Fair Share Housing, uh, Center or someone else, that was soliciting public comment regarding the plan prior to a certain date.
Okay.
So, you know, that...
Probably, yeah, the court master, who is appointed to basically be the special expert, 'cause the judges aren't themselves necessarily experts in affordable housing.
Right.
Was Mary Beth Lonergan of Clark Heaton Hints, and she is the court master for about a third of...
That could be, but my point being that, that there was a, there was a time and a place in order for the public to, to comment on this plan, and that apparently, you know, unfortunately, that, that time and place has come and passed. Um, so I don't think anyone should be coming here saying that they haven't had an opportunity to review the plan or comment on it, uh, or somehow be shocked that, you know, that the township is now moving to actually proceed, uh, in accordance with the settlement agreement. So I just wanted to make that clear for everybody, in case there was some ambiguity there. So, all right, thank you.
Why, why is that true, Joe? What, what he just said? The, the, the town, the community that's in, that is going to be 100% affected by this has not commented on this, other than maybe the board may have been privy to this settlement with the, the Fair Share Housing Corporation, but not the community that's, that's gonna 100% affect this whole town, especially Malaga and Franklinville. So how can we not have that opportunity to review what we just received yesterday?
Why? Because we're, well, here's why, because we're postponing it, uh, until a future date, till, uh, to allow that. That, I don't know, back in July when this came out, and that the agreement was out, I don't know how, why that was broadcasted, uh, I don't remember, uh...
You gotta remember, this isn't like an ordinance or something we came up with, it's a, it's called a mandate. It's like with gas stocks, you can't go to the gas station and debate how much you're gonna pay. It was a mandate, it started off as a thousand ounces almost, and we negotiated that down through the rules as much as we could, and that's how you end up here. It wasn't anybody's idea or plan, and we didn't have a lot of saying either, it's a mandate.
Right.
On the court, so I don't know if the document was out in July or not, I'm not sure.
Could I ask Mike, the solicitor?
No, Mike can't, uh, Mike's conflicted, he knows, he's up against it.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should go forward, we got a motion here, and I understand, I think everybody will, should be notified again, and everybody that they wanna come up and speak, that's fine, we'll be waiting for you here.
I also wanted to clarify that any individual property owner whose property is affected by the overlay received a certified letter notifying them of such prior to...
That part has not taken place yet.
But, but there's a gentleman right there, they received the certi- I just confirmed, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't realize the town actually did that, that's...
Yeah, they sent certified letters notifying them of that open public portion that they could comment on it, uh, 'cause somebody mentioned something about, you know, property owners not knowing, and I thought, I thought I had read that that had taken place, and I just confirmed with one of the property owners that they did in fact, were, were, they got personal notice that their properties were gonna be affected by it, thank you.
And that's why I said back in July, I was not sure if it was or wasn't.
It's a four, they were, and then two or three.
Yeah, at a mi- at a minimum, the, the actual parcels received notice, uh, you know, can't confirm or deny within 200 feet, but...
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, just real quick, I, I, sorry, I came a little late. Uh, I, I was told that we're postponing this portion, so a lot of my questions, I won't, I won't ask, so, don't worry about that.
Hold on to that, so you don't have to rewrite them, you'll, you'll have an option?
I'll try to.
You can have another time.
First, primarily, I wanted to come up here and just to apologize to Chairman Pesh for my behavior last month. Um, got into a little bit of a shouting match, and that's never a good thing.
We're, we're good, we're, we're good.
Yeah, so, so, so I just wanted to apologize for, for my behavior. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna venture too much into, 'cause I have this whole little list of questions that I want, and unfortunately, a lot of them are legal questions, so of course, yeah, I'm out of luck there.
Well, I'm gonna get in discussion, I'm gonna show you that.
I'm out of luck there. Um, I do have, hopefully, this isn't too much of a legal question, 'cause I know a lot of people say that, you know, there's nothing we could do, it's mandated state housing, this is, this is a, an agreement, a settlement that we had. Um, but I just wanted to know if any of you gentlemen were aware that there's 13 municipalities who are suing Governor Murphy to try and force him to re, uh, reenact the defunct COA board that used to make this policy? Um, they were trying to do this because, um, they were tired of having this whole program run by the Fair Share Housing Center and the justice system. And I was just curious to see, I mean, I know, obviously, there's only a few committee members, so this might be more of a pertinent question for the committee, but if anybody on the committee, if they, you know, they, they say they're, they're pushed, they're, you know, dragged, kicking and screaming to, to do these things, if they would be willing to file with these other municipalities in the suit?
I, I, two a- two answers. I'll answer moving forward, as to questions for the township committee to determine whether or not they wanna litigate it. Moving back, uh, under my six-year tender, at that point in time, I tried, uh, I had every thought. Uh, I was a big advocate of frivolous lawsuits, uh, going after people who sued it town on it because they got deep pockets. I also was in favor of that, and the attorneys advised, "Don't do it." Uh, "Don't do it, don't do it, don't do it." So, uh, you know, that, to your question...
Yeah.
That's more of a township committee question at this point, uh, 'cause they were really making the decision to pursue.
Yeah, and again, from my understanding, um, they're not trying to sue to get this, um, to replace the 20, the 99 to 25 requirements, it's more after 25, the future requirements, just so that there can be a clearer system for all you guys, kind of take the heat off of you guys, so...
I think, though, is, nobody's been successful yet, and I would assume that probably every one of those towns is in the process, like we're entered.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're looking for relief.
Yeah.
So it's not that they're saying no, they're saying, "Okay, but change it."
Yeah, change the, change the system.
Yeah, and so the best thing to do would be take that list of questions and email them to the administrator.
Okay.
'Cause we don't have a lawyer here.
Yeah.
Honestly, there's a separate lawyer handling this, and none of us are experts.
Okay.
Send that list right to them and get legal answers.
Okay, and I do have copies of the questions I was going to ask tonight, um, for, for everybody, if anybody's interested in them, if they wanna, yeah, if they wanna get back, if they just, yeah, so, 'cause I plan on asking them at the next meeting. Yeah, okay, no problem, and I just, just, yeah, it's, 'cause I plan on asking it next month, unless I think of other questions, but, you know, just other things, uh, 'cause I read through the report, and I just saw all the different data, and I just wanted to ask a few questions. No gotcha questions, just general, I just was concerned about, you know, certain things, and I, unfortunately, a lot of them are legal, but hopefully, I'll, I'll, I'll hold my fire until next month, though. But thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
We have these copies, though.
Oh, yeah, sure, I'll get it at the end of this.
Thank you, anyone else?
Do I need to approach her, am I allowed enough?
Nah, you're, you're, yeah, it's, you're on the, it's, you're on the microphone, I wanna record.
On the red, make sure you say your name.
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road, Malaga.
And it's, again, I don't, I'll hold all my questions till later, but I do have a quick question for you, Mr. Brelly. You had said you just found out 10 days ago that you, you have a conflict because of where you live. If this was in June, why'd you just find out?
In June? No, I, I found out that we had the public hearing, just found out, I think, on Thursday.
Right.
So that was a little bit late to try to find somebody, and really, really wasn't up to me to be able to find someone, so...
Well, no, I understand, but the, the reason I was asking is if all this information came out in June, which I was unaware of at that point, I know what's been going on, but the actual report, I didn't see till just recently. I just didn't know why you didn't know that ahead of time to find somebody, and I'm not faulting you, I'm just wondering if you just received it early, you know?
I believe you didn't realize it was going to be on the agenda.
Okay, all right, and that's...
I found out some Thursday where I was on the agenda.
Right, okay.
We're meeting dates and judges on this.
Right, no, I understand, that's, I'm just...
We're actually recording hearing on Friday.
Yeah, just to, to clarify, the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center was last year. The actual housing plan report that is on, on the agenda for tonight wasn't finished until March 7th or 8th.
Okay.
And after, once it was finished, is when we got it placed on the agenda.
Okay.
Because we're, we're going to be in court on Friday.
Right, no, and I, I understand it's a mess, I mean, it's, the, the whole thing's a mess. And we gotta do what we gotta do, I'm not faulting anybody for that, but I was just trying to figure out what, what led to this, because we just got it, and then according to Jason, we're not gonna have a chance to really make much of an impact anyway, if, 'cause we're supposed to have known about it, but yet it just happened a week and a half ago. So that doesn't, it's a little conflict from what he said and what I'm understanding, am I correct?
Well, everything that was in his report was in other documents, it's basically been...
It was all, it's a capitalized report.
Right, this, this is the one for the, where the public can get access to it, to view it easier than trying to go through all the old agendas.
I don't know how much influence was available, like, it's not like a normal thing, like we could pay.
Well, I, I've gone through the last three years of meetings, and I got about 12 pages of this 287-page report that I could find through each meeting, so there was no where's near enough to, to get any type of decision together or questions on that. So that's why I'm just trying to figure out how we aren't allowed to make, or possibly make an impact according to what Jason said. So I'm, I'm just looking for clarification on that.
And we'll have to get, we'll, the process will have to get revised more.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, wanna make sure we all have our...
That's really why we wanna avoid...
I know, and I understand that, like I said, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I'm just wanna make sure we're open.
A lot of it, um, a lot of the reports are exhibits, and a lot of them are legal documents, eat up a lot of them, it's 247...
Oh, I know, I have it all sitting over there on my ta- my chair, I've read through it all twice.
Most of it's legal.
Oh, I know, it's, 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 it's a mess.
Right, so that's why you didn't see anything probably in, in when you went back to review meetings, you're not gonna see that.
No, I know, like I said, I found 12 pages that reference things in that report, is it, but 12 pages aren't enough to make a decision on, as a public, of what questions they ask, it's impossible.
And not to tell anybody that you shouldn't read the report, if you wanna read it front to back, back to front, upside down, five times, you, you go ahead and prepare any questions you want. Essentially, what this is, it's about, there's about five pages of substance in here, and the rest is just documents required by the court.
It's a lot of fluff.
Uh, and, and we'll say, you guys are getting off easy, this one's 275 pages. I prepared each of the township's master, or housing plan also, up in Burlington County, uh, where they had an obligation of over 1,000, I think there was 1,700 pages of appendices in that.
Yeah, yeah, I found three other ones that work over 2,000 pages. You know, they're just, they're unbelievable, and it's, everybody's having the same issue.
Majority of it is deeds to properties that are already affordable units, uh, a 30-page deed for each unit saying that it's a deed restricted unit for 30 years, and such and such address, but we, by law, we have to include all of it, and that's an appendix to the housing plan.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I just wanna make sure we have time to go through it. That was all, thank you.
One, one follow-up here. Out of the bams, he came up, he said that somebody got certified letters, and how'd he get a certified letter when the plan just came out on Thursday? How'd he get certified letters, getting notified that his property was, was part of this?
The zone, the zone was done, I believe, in May, the overlay, he probably got that letter in a somber, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not 100% positive that it was certified, I, I know I got a letter. I think it was certified, but I'm, I'm not sure.
I thought it was certified.
Okay, well, not the lawyer here, but I do know land use law and planning law. Uh, okay, so, right now, this would be the master plan, which recommends changes to the zoning ordinance. The actual ordinance to change any zoning has not even been introduced by the committee yet. Uh, once the committee introduces it, technically speaking, if something is recommended directly in the master plan, they don't have to send notice to individual property owners, they can if they want, and it sounds like it probably would be a good idea for, for me to do that, it's not that many property owners, it wouldn't be terribly difficult. Then they would be getting a certified mail after it's introduced, letting them know when the committee would be adopting the ordinance. Uh, the certified mailings that went out for this, uh, for a master plan, it says the local paper has to be notified 10 days in advance, uh, the county planning board has to get sent a copy, the Pinelands gets sent a copy, and the state gets sent a copy. So I don't believe that, that any individual property owners were individually noticed for this particular plan. If they did, then that's something above and beyond that the township would have done. And frankly, since those zoning actually changed or took place, if they did that last year, that was above and beyond what's required by law as well.
Hi, S D Engineer, are you, are you Christopher?
Yes.
Um, in, in your report, how come you didn't include the maps or overlay maps?
It's in, I'm sorry? All the maps are Appendix G, I think it is.
It's around 100, around page 158.
Oh, okay.
I do, if anyone's, I do have copies of the overlay maps by themselves, without the other 274 pages, if anyone wants those.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Morris, is it all ready with the postpone to ask the engineer about a question in one of the appendices?
I'll, I'll tell you if you're, I'll tell you if you're approaching the line. I'll tell you if you're, I'll tell you if you're approaching the line.
Okay, Appendix O, the last page, Section 4. You have libraries that applications will be at. You have Newfield Public Library, but you don't have Franklin Township Library.
Okay, I can-
I have a concern about that. Newfield's not out of town yet. And the next page in front of that, you have listed advertising in Gloucester County Times. Gloucester County Times ceased publication in 2012. It should be-
This was taken from a model document for Gloucester County Times.
That doesn't, my concern is it's incorrect.
Okay.
The current name of the publication is South Jersey Times. Just when it's got approved, just want to keep it clean. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. See, no one else? It's time I entertain a motion to close the whole portion.
We've got a motion.
A motion, second?
Set.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now we'll go back to you. No need for a closed session, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else to bring up, Seba?
Yeah, I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Oh, who would you like to bring up, Mr. Kelly?
So I have, I want to talk about, you know, the whole redevelopment. I want to bring up the redevelopment zone and the issues that surround that, and I want to, I want to just give them a background, everybody knows the background. There are three parcels in this area that was to be considered in a redevelopment zone. Number one being Fazio Land, everybody's familiar with that piece, that's the most familiar to everybody. That's the piece that was for sale for a number of years. People came in, expressed interest, no deals ever got done. And then another investor came in, middle of last year, inquired about developing it, wanted to know what sort of property incentives there were available. Abatements are always one, and pilots are another, but in order to offer the pilot, you have to then declare the property a redevelopment zone. Orders were then given to do a study, to ask CME to do the study and see if these property, if this property fit the state criteria to be declared a redevelopment zone. My issues that I want to, I want to ask Mr. Borelli to do this. I want Mr. Borelli to write a letter or an email to the township committee, asking for an explanation as to where the other two parcels came from. The Fazio Land, as I said, is no surprise to anybody, but there are two other pieces of land that was to be considered for redevelopment, and I'm not so sure that we really understand what was the source of that, where did that come from, why was that part of the overall study? That's the first part of my request. My second part is, if the board is ever asked to do that again, that we are given clear information as to where that request comes from. So if we're asked to look at another piece of property that's going to be considered for redevelopment, why? Why is it being asked to be considered? What is the potential projects, or what are the potential opportunities available if those areas are declared as redevelopment zones? So I would like Mr. Borelli to do that, in case that's something that you can do.
Jim, I can do, but I can do it with the whole body, which already asked me to do. I mean, I can't do it for one more time.
Then if that's the way to get it done, then, yeah, that's what I want.
All right, a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Objected?
Sorry.
All right, anyone else?
Do we need to discuss our revisiting the master plan, who the committee is?
Are you reading my notes? Are you reading my notes?
Is there anything else?
Okay.
Did you want to?
Yeah, I asked Michael to review, knowing that the master plan review was coming up. I asked Michael to review the legal piece of it today, and Michael, you want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, the basic process is that you have a master plan in place, and required by municipal land use law to reexamine it every 10 years.
Okay, and that's, please, give me the difference between a total rewrite that we did, whatever, a number of years ago, and a review, and what, well, go ahead. The difference between the two, and what are we required now to do, so that there's no confusion?
Right, so you have a master plan, so you're not developing a new one, you're reexamining it as required to do. You have to have a reexamination report prepared. That report has to cover certain areas, something like a half a dozen items listed in the statute, and we won't recite them, but essentially, what you're doing is you're taking a look at your old master plan, looking at those goals and objectives, and seeing what you've achieved, what you haven't, why that might have happened or not happened. You're looking at what's changed as far as your demographics, what areas have seemed to need attention because you've been getting more applications about something, less applications about something else. Take all those factors into consideration and determine whether you need to make changes to your master plan. So if after that, after that examination is done and the report comes out, it could say, "No, no need to change anything," then you're done. Everything's fine, the old master plan is good, we're happy. Or you find out that there are things that need to be changed, new objectives, new goals, new ordinances, whatever. And there's a list of areas that the master plan covers, such as fair housing, many of it. So if you determine there is a need to make some changes, then at that point, you're doing a amended master plan. So then you start preparing that amendment to the master plan. Planning Board prepares that with the help of their professionals. The next thing you would do is do a tentative approval of the new, of the amendment to the master plan. Do a tentative approval at the same time you set a public hearing date. So you say, "This is, this amendment to the master plan looks good, we'll set a hearing date or whatever," then the notices all go out, you have the public hearing. Based upon that, you then approve a final amendment to the master plan, and then it goes through the process, fortunately published and noticed, and so. So that's in a nutshell, the process.
So, what does that document look like, then? In other words, when you talk about an amendment, so let's say there's an amendment, so you have the amendment document that will go through and cite the initial sections of the master plan and say, you know, this section's deleted and replaced in full or in part by the following. And then, does that amendment then get attached to a redline initial master plan, so that you can look at the old document, you see what's been crossed out?
I mean, the old document will always be there. I don't know, you know, in the process, yes. Not once it's done, you wouldn't necessarily have it.
It looks like a contract, you go to your redline, you have the changes in there.
Typically, no. I really just sent a draft of a master plan reexam to another town yesterday. It's basically the six things that need to be leaned and reexamined, like just said. First, it's basically you state what the goals and objectives and recommendations and assumptions were from the previous master plan, which in your case, I think your master plan was maybe 2004 or 2007, and then your last reexam was in 2013. So it'd be basically the same thing as your current master plan reexam. You go through, what were the goals and objectives and policy assumptions from the original master plan? You state what they were, and then you state whether or not those remain valid goals or objectives or policy assumptions, and then you go through, all right, well, what has changed in terms of, have you adopted any ordinances? What's changed around you? How is the town growing? Is it not growing? What has changed in terms of state laws that would impact your ability to plan for the future? And you make a determination as to whether or not the goals from your old master plan, whether you want to stay the course or you want to make any changes. And it's not necessarily taking the old plan and striking things out, it's making recommendations of where the plan might need to change, or in many cases, it's-
Basically, it's going to go back to the original plan.
It references the original plan. It's not a, it's not the zoning ordinance itself, or we're, you know, taking the-
You know, I understand amendment was written, but what I'm saying is that a lot of, a lot of contracts that I see, right, you'll have an amendment to the initial, to the underlying document, right, that amendment will contain all of the changes that you're changing from the underlying document. And then I'll see that amendment attached or part of a bigger document, which includes the original master plan redline. So, so the two tied together. Now, what you're saying is that's not how you see them, but is that the one-
I suppose, that might be the first one to ever do it that way, but I don't think-
I mean, is there a reason why it couldn't be that, right?
Uh, it could, I suppose, if that's what the town wanted to do.
I mean, it's very clear, it shows exactly what you're doing. I mean, it sets it out in the amendment what the changes are, and then you go back, you know, you go back to that, it's part of the original master plan, you go through the agreement, and those sections are all redlined.
I will put it this way, if we brought the master plan reexam-
You're saying the final draft?
Yeah, it's like a draft contract.
No, I mean, a final draft is not a regular contract.
You would clean it up at the end.
You clean it up at the end and take that redline.
Yeah.
I'll put it this way-
You could do an amendment, like you could amend it, why are you going, Jim, and list all the things?
The working document.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a minute, but it adds all out.
The master plan reexam report itself wouldn't be listing out the old master plan. It's literally just a bulleted list of the goals and objectives and stating whether or not they're still valid. And then, if you choose to, after you do the master plan reexam, you can amend the master plan, and that, I've never seen it done this way, but it could be done, as in taking the old master plan itself from 2004 and going through and redlining and adding in new stuff. But I don't think there's anything in the law that would prevent you from doing it that way.
No, not adding the new stuff, just redlining out what's been changed.
That's one approach. I've never seen it done, but it could be done if that's the way the town wants to do it.
I mean, I would go to both, but it's what I'm used to seeing in major regions of contracts.
Okay, well, I don't know that contracts are necessarily the most appropriate comparison here, because this is a guiding document rather than a contractual agreement. The zoning ordinance itself, that's the way it's usually done, yes, when this is the master plan that just states what you want to see in your zoning ordinance.
Right, it's still a legal document.
It's a quasi-legal document. It's, the master plan itself has no force of law, but it has to inform the zoning ordinance. Your zoning ordinance has to be consistent with your master plan, but the master plan itself is not necessarily a legal document.
And in purpose, I understand what Jimmy's trying to do is this and this, and in the end, one cleanup document. I'm fine with that. The purpose of bringing it up is, we're up against, it's time to start that. If the board's in agreement, what I think I would like to do is, the first step is to, and I guess it would be through Jen to the administrator, is to put a public notice out that we're asking for volunteers. Now, obviously, it's not going to be a hundred people. The last one, I believe, was probably 10 or 12 people, but a diverse group. And let's start with people of interest that could contact the administrator, or Jen, or some contact point at the township to get started with a committee. Obviously, the engineer would be a key piece in this, but a group that would be able to sit down, and the group needs to be diverse. Now, it's not going to be, can't be, you know, it's not going, it's technically difficult to have a gigantic number, but if anyone on the board is interested, I think, at this-
Who should we use as contact point? Matt, the administrator?
Yeah, and people on the board who are interested, contact the administrator of your interest. Now, obviously, we have a quorum, we would have a quorum issue, but also, I would like to see if we can get the clerk, if the township committee is agreeable to get the clerk to put a public announcement out there that the master plan view is forming, and the master plan review is forming a committee, and if you're interested, have the public respond to that, and then we'll try to get a, individuals from each interest within the town. I think it would be easier to send it to Barbara. Okay. All right, that's what I mean. Jen, would you take care of that? That, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to mention, Jen, last month, when we talked about putting the planning committee together, I gave my name to Brittany. I'm not sure where that went, since she's not here, so I just want to make sure that you-
Okay.
Okay.
Jen, I think the proper language is called the master plan advisory committee.
Advisory committee.
That's the actual, yeah. I have a newspaper article in front of me dated June of 2004.
Is my picture in there?
In the obituaries. Anyway.
That was the first time I got on the page.
So in here, there's, in 2004, it was a major rebuild of the master plan, and we had 18 people on the advisory committee. And this, of course, is a smaller thing, so I think it would be safe to say that we will not have more than 18 people total.
Yeah, that's a safe, and that's why I said a dozen type of thing, you know, we're not dealing with 50 people type of thing. We're, it's less important about who, it's more important about having diversity across the town, you know, environmental, economical, fire, you know, on and on, so that everyone is able to bring something to the table from, you know, their expertise. Everybody is okay with that?
Yes.
You agree with it? We're good? Okay. You take care of that for me, please. Anybody have anything else? It's time I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, thank you, everyone, for coming out.